Good evening, I'm Mike Wood and you're Johnson County Board of Education Board Chair. I welcome you to our joint meeting with the Johnson County Public Schools Board of Education and the Johnson County Commissioners. I welcome all the visitors that are here to listen to this meeting on the growth of Johnston County. We honor you for being here tonight. You are our taxpayers and we welcome our guests especially. Tonight will be an interesting meeting. I'm looking forward to the data that's going to be presented. You know, Johnston County is a great place to live and reside and for our children to get educated in this great county of Johnston. And I welcome the meeting tonight and I'm very excited to see what the data brings tonight. I welcome you. Please turn off all your phones or put it on vibrate and I'll turn the meeting over to Ted Godwin.
Thank you, Mike. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Johnson County Board of Commissioners. On behalf of Chairman Carver, I extend his regrets. He and his wife are on a long planned vacation that was booked before this date was set, so he sends his regrets. Also Chairman, I mean Commissioner Wood is tied up out of town. He may get here, he may not. So I extend those regrets. I look forward to this joint meeting. There's a lot of things on the Board of Commissioners' plate right now, from detention center needs, budget needs, but there's nothing more important, I don't think, to our Board or yours than the education of our children. And that's what we're all about. A wise man told me, as we enter into meetings like this, as we enter into any meeting or discussion, if you always regard the Rotarians' four-way test of the things you think, say, and do. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? So I thank you for coming, look forward to this discussion. And as we get started, I'd like to ask you to please stand and join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
My pleasure to be here in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Dr. Renfro.
Thank you, Mr. Godwin and Mr. Wood. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. We have presenters that will come up. I'd like to introduce Mike Miller from Numerics, Thomas Dudley from the OREAD Lab at NC State, and first at the podium tonight, Matthew Miller from North Carolina State as well. Matthew, come on up.
And good evening to all the residents here in Johnston County, to members of the Board and the County Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here again. Wanted to first thank you for your hospitality. The tea is excellent. We've been working with Johnston County over the last six months. Came this past fall to have conversations with folks, really try to understand what is going on in Johnston County currently, and I think looking with a sort of angle of about 10 years out, what's likely to come down the road as we continue to see growth and development in the county. Tonight, what we're going to do is really focus in on what are the current issues and emerging issues that both the Board and the County Commissioners would benefit from considering. Really, can we all come together in the identification of what those issues are? At a future presentation, we'll be sharing potential solutions to those issues, but the focus of tonight's meeting is really around one central theme. In order to agree on potential solutions, you've got to first agree on the issues that are being grappled with and planned for. So with that, kind of talk about the framework, how to think about some of these questions, and then we'll break into the different components of our efforts. First, I'd like to introduce our project team. My name's Matthew Palmer. I lead the School Planning and Transportation Group at North Carolina State University. In addition, I'd like to just ask my colleagues to stand. This is Thomas Dudley, the Program Manager for the Operations Research and Education Lab at NC State, and Michael Miller with Numerics. Collectively, we have worked through this project, really approaching it from the school planning framework, thinking about how can we take historic enrollment data, excuse me, let me go back here. Is this, sorry to pause, but there we go. We'll talk about the school planning framework in a moment, just identifying again the issues that would be associated with growth and development in Johnston County, and then how that will lead to some of the solutions that are being considered in the future. We'll specifically dive into the land use study for Johnston, talking about what we found through interviews and conversations with community stakeholders in the development community. Then Michael Miller will talk about the membership forecast, looking forward in the enrollment projections for the county. Pairing that future enrollment projection, we'll then look at the capacities of the existing schools and what that might mean for growth pressure from a geographic perspective as well as at the school level. And then lastly, we'll begin to consider sort of the overall picture, the summary, the takeaway, if you will, what are those emerging issues for Johnston County, and be here to answer questions and provide answers as you have them. Briefly, OREAD started working with Johnston County Public Schools in 1994. So we have a longstanding relationship in supporting the planning of schools in the county. We are based at North Carolina State University at the Institute for Transportation Research So the deliverables that we'll be discussing tonight, discuss the land use study that was performed this past fall, the membership forecast that Michael Miller with Numerics will share, and then a comparative sort of out-of-capacity analysis, looking at individual schools and understanding where those growth pressures are going to be. As I mentioned, later on, we will be back to present on some potential solutions and scenarios, given consideration for those issues. So one way to think about this from a planning framework, and again, when we talk about a planning framework, ultimately, this is designed towards how might the Board and the County Commissioners work together to make decisions? And I think first, what we've done is break out the demographic and student enrollment modeling, which we'll be discussing tonight. Again, that's looking at historic enrollment data from the district, your ADM, if you will, and taking that historic enrollment data, geocoding it, and actually locating each student in the district so that we can understand where folks have been coming from. We take that historic enrollment perspective and then layer in additional development information. So that's, again, the land use study capturing development and growth factors that are happening throughout Johnston County. And then that helps us produce an overall forecast for student enrollment looking ahead. We'll then take that information, provide a full capacity analysis for facilities in Johnston County, and again, identify the emerging issues that are likely to occur as a function of that. Are there any questions about our process or what we'll be focusing on tonight? So just a quick infographic for you here. Again, this process is one that is designed to specifically help you come away from this meeting tonight with an understanding of what are those emerging issues. I sense that through conversations, there's a general awareness that there's a lot of growth and development in Johnston County. That came out through every interview that we had with the stakeholders in the planning and development community. Moreover, precisely what those issues are, I think, has a geographic lens to it, and we want to make sure that in looking at that, you have a full understanding of when and where those issues are likely to occur. So overall, the land use study has six components to it. We'll talk briefly about demographic and economic indicators. After that, we'll highlight residential developments, commercial developments, industrial development, transportation, infrastructure, and water and sewer. So overall, Johnston County is truly one of the fastest-growing regions and counties in the country. It is well above the state's average for growth between 2010 and 2016. In addition of that growth, we see that many of the residents in Johnston County are under the age of 18, higher than the state average there. And again, not only at the age of 18, but also at the age of 5 and below. We see that Johnston County is a lot of kids, increasingly so. A little bit lower as far as the overall percentage of residents over the age of 65, and tracking close to the state average as it relates to minority composition in your community. Looking more at economics and workforce indicators, Johnston County is fortunate to have a lower unemployment rate than the state average, a higher overall median household income, fewer people in poverty, and a lower cost of living. And one of the things that really stands out on this last point here on cost of living, when you go deeper into that, you can see that while some of the costs of living, like transportation and utilities, are a little bit higher for households in Johnston County, the housing costs are quite a bit lower, actually at 83 cents on the dollar. So that is part of this narrative, is that the affordability of the housing in proximity to Wake County, as well as large employers in the county itself, are available at an affordable price for many of your residents, one of the key draw factors. One thing that stood out as well is just the overall size and volume of large employers in the county. This is quite a bit more than we typically see in many of the counties that we work with here in North Carolina, particularly that there are five employers with more than 1,000 employees. And again, this is just employers that have 500 or more employees associated with them. In respect to the land use study itself, we were fortunate enough to meet with those that are on the list here, and I won't read them out by name, but many of you are in attendance tonight, and I just wanted to thank you for your participation. I'd like to acknowledge as well, Mr. Michael Taylor, for coordinating these interviews and sitting with us through each conversation. And the one thing that stood out, I think, more than any one particular municipality or one particular neighborhood development, was there was a mutual understanding and respect from the planning and development community as it relates back to the quality of public education in Johnston County. That was a dominant theme. One of the things that we consider in our work is the emerging pressures that public schools face, enrollment at private schools, charter schools, home schools, but overall, in this county particularly, it stood out that folks were very in step with supporting public schools in any way they could. I just wanted to highlight that and bring it to your attention tonight. So in the biggest picture, we're going to look first at Johnston County's approved residential developments. You'll see here the development name, the total number of residential units that have been approved, those that have been developed, as have our interviews, as well as those that remain available moving forward. This is the first list here that you can see. The total approved was almost 11,000 units in the county level, many of those associated with Flowers Plantation, as you're likely aware. And you can see there about 7,500 remain to be built. And we take this information and pair it with that historic enrollment data to get a sense of, when we layer in build-out expectations, when we layer in how quickly the neighborhoods are actually being constructed, we can then put together our forecast models. We then met specifically with folks from the town of Clayton, and you can see the indicators here. Overall, almost 9,000 units have been approved in Clayton, of which about 6,500 remain to be constructed. Again, we pair that information with the county information and put together a larger narrative and story as far as what's happening with development. And really, as you look at the municipalities that are listed here with Archer Lodge and Benson, Princeton, and Wilson's Mills, we're seeing a lot of development focus along the 70 corridor. We'll talk more about transportation improvements later in the land use study, but the focal point here is that there's development happening up and down 70, particularly starting in Clayton and moving east. In respect to commercial development, one of the things that stood out was that as the residential development continues to increase, there is a demand and need for commercial activity in the county. There's a particular focus on, certainly, you have a number of wonderful downtown main streets in the county. I use this example from the Clayton branding campaign, but overall, there was an awareness and appreciation for the importance of a vibrant sort of main street throughout the county, as well as the increasing likelihood that commercial development will be locating a key intersection. So we talked about some of that more indepthly in the land use study, but again, that if we look at where those intersections are, and we focus on the downtowns, an emphasis on filling in quality of life in and around the Johnston existing downtowns. In respect to industrial development, one thing that stood out was that due to Clayton's capacity to handle pharmaceutical wastewater treatment plant processing, that unique capacity for Clayton has helped with the recruitment and retention of some large pharmaceutical firms. Obviously, Novo Nordisk is well-known, as well as Griffles. And then in addition, sort of as we're seeing that clustering of highway access, proximity to the larger Triangle region, Wake County and so forth, that Johnston County is a destination for not only existing firms that are located in the county, but also those would be considering moving to the region. So again, the highlighted point here is that you've got a lot of infrastructure and capacity between your transportation system, your water sewer system, available land, a well-trained workforce, and trying to pull all of those together at the county level as well as at the local levels. The transportation improvements that are scheduled to commence in Johnston County are going to, this is an interesting sort of, they are responding to some of the growth demand that we see from the residential side, but there is a question mark as far as, in addition, how much residential growth that will continue to propagate. And I think that's something to, to the Board particularly, to keep your eyes on, is that these four projects that you see on the left-hand side of the Board, the completion of the 540 loop, the widening of 40 between 440 and 42, the actual widening of NC 42 itself, and then the eventual conversion of US 70 into Interstate 42. When you look at that in the bigger picture, strong emphasis and encouragement to continue to talk with the development community. Within the land use study, you can think of our work as a snapshot in time. We've talked with those that we can to gather perspectives, but we'll walk through these projects, and I would just emphasize that while they are in various planning phases and construction phases, the takeaway that I want to make sure that the Board hears and for the County Commissioners as well, is that that's going to induce growth that we cannot fully forecast until the development community is partnering with the local leadership. So this is a good sort of example of where, through our land use interviews, we're able to talk with developers, understand what's been approved, understand what may be coming. When we get to the transportation improvements, that may be beyond the 10-year window, but pay close attention. So first and foremost, the completion of the 540 loop. This has been in the news recently, and with that, see, the full completion of, well, the full completion of 540, that will then increase accessibility and mobility for Johnston County residents, accessing the rest of the Triangle region and parts to the west as well. With the widening of Interstate 40 between Apex and Johnston County, particularly NC 42, we're looking at adding two lanes in each direction. Now, as you know, there's currently traffic considerations, congestion considerations at present, and that's designed to help alleviate some of that congestion. But in doing so, you know, again, it's something to be aware of. As your travel times and access points from parts of Johnston County to the rest of the Triangle decrease and your mobility increases, that could, again, be something to keep an eye on for residential development in the rest, sort of to the east of Clayton and to the southern portions of the county. The US 70 corridor, we've been discussing some interchange conversions, looking at Wilson's Mills and some of the intersections being converted into interchanges. Again, Princeton, looking at considerations for that location as well, how to prepare US 70 for an eventual conversion into Interstate 42. That will, I think, do two things. First and foremost, as we look at Wilson's Mills and Princeton and the eastern portion of the county, that would suggest that your travel times to not only Clayton and to Smithfield, but to other parts of the Triangle will improve. It would also suggest that as 42 stretches all the way out to Carteret County and Morehead City, the Beaufort area, you're likely to see increased beach traffic as well. And so that's something to consider as you're thinking about development. There's not only the residential development side, but also certainly commercial that will go with that. So, you know, we are painting in broad strokes here to talk about an overall picture, but these things come together in an overall narrative that, you know, our intent tonight is to give you an introduction to some of the growth considerations and factors. The last point here on transportation is just that, as we look at North Carolina 42, it certainly has a current existing congestion issue between US 70 and NC 50, and so this project seeks to widen 42 to improve transportation and, again, access and mobility, travel times, and to reduce congestion, particularly during morning and afternoon commute periods. Last point I wanted to highlight here is that while the existing capacities of the water and sewer systems in the county accommodate current demand, it is something to consider not only what is the capacity of the system, but where is the system functioning and accessible? That is certainly going to be a key indicator on not only where growth occurs, but the level of growth, how dense that growth may be. You know, if you're on a well or septic system, that reduces your overall densities at the lot level. And so something to consider there is just a, you know, in these conversations about student enrollment projections, what's likely to happen in the future, be aware that many of those conversations come back to core infrastructure questions related to transportation, water and sewer, and where are those services available? I'd like to sort of just pause for a moment. We've covered a lot of information on overall growth factors in the county. Are there questions from either the Board or from the County Commissioners that we can address at this stage?
I have a question. And we're looking at several municipalities and towns. Any reason why we don't have Smithfield or Selma included in this growth factors and considerations?
As far as a spotlight in those particular municipalities?
Yes, as far as including them in the group and what you're measuring.
Well, there's a twofold answer to that question. The only municipalities we've highlighted are those that have identified neighborhoods that have been approved for development. I will put this in terms that we've reached out to both Smithfield and Selma to have that conversation, to receive any development information, and it was not returned and meetings were not made. So ultimately, we can only talk with those that are willing to come to the table.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
I'm just curious about how you derived your 13% poverty when many of our schools have percentages exceeding 75% poverty. I just wondered how you derived 13% as the overall poverty rate for Johnston County.
That's the rate that's produced at the state level by the Department of Health and Human Services. We can certainly verify that information, but that's just available as public information. I'm happy to verify that and check with you afterwards. Okay, thank you. Now we're going to transition into how we take this information from the land use study itself and consider forecasting and modeling projections. Michael Miller with Numerics will be covering that information.
Thank you, Matthew. Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see some familiar faces. It's been a while since I've been here, but I always enjoy coming back. I, whoa, I don't want to do that. It's been my pleasure to work with Johnston County Public Schools for 15 years now, first with OREAD, now with my own business, Numerics. Through that time, I've been involved with annual membership forecast updates, multiple land use studies, and the openings of Dixon Road, Westview, Princeton, Powhatan, Micro Elementarys, Archer Lodge, and Swift Creek Middle Schools, and Cleveland and Corinth Holders High Schools. Each project came with its own set of challenges, but each one was a deeply rewarding experience for myself and working with the Boards and the exceptional staff at Johnston County Public Schools and the communities in Johnston County. Tonight, I'm here to present the 2017-18 Membership Forecast. And I won't go into the weeds too far on this, but one thing I would like to stress is some of the things that Matthew was speaking of are future-looking. Where is the growth going to happen? Can we articulate where the children are going to be for, over the next 10 years? And that's a big part of what a membership forecast should do. It's not the only part, though. So there's two pieces of it that are combined, synthesized, if you will, into our membership forecast. First, we're going to take a look at historic trends and then articulate how those findings from the land use study get fed into the forecast model. And you put those two together and you've got a membership forecast. So about the historic trends, there are multiple ingredients that we analyze to build on our and understand the historic trends, but the three major ones are listed here. First, resident live births. The reason we look at resident live births is statistically, it gives us a pretty good idea about kindergarteners five years in the future. That's not always the truth, but in many cases, and in the case of Johnston County, it's a pretty good indicator of where we might be. That does not mean all the children that are born to county residents five years ago will end up in kindergarten, but the number itself is a fairly strong correlation. The resident live births for the county have continued their upward trend from a low in 2013. The most recent data we have is 2016, and there were 2,336 resident live births in the county in that. We should get 2017 data any time. This information helps us with the forecast because we kind of look at this as a trend, at least the trend that's happening since 2013, and use that to project out the resident live births for the next 10 years. And that projection of this membership forecast you will see tonight is an estimate of 1.5% growth per year for resident live births till 2022. The second piece of information is looking in the past and understanding how the, how the children, how the membership, I should say, the membership population has grown thus far up to 2017. You grew by an average of 513 K-12 students since 2012. This year, the growth exceeded that in a big way, and you grew by 868 K-12 students. And let me mention something here, because I know there's a lot of numbers going around. For as long as I've been working with Johnston County, we've used month-one ADM data, average daily membership data we obtained from DPI. That data rolls out somewhere late October, early November. Now, the reason we use that data in the past was it fit into the planning timeline of Johnston County Public Schools. You get the data early, make the forecast early, start making decisions. So one of the numbers you may have heard for the growth in Johnston County Public Schools is around 1,300. That number's true also. If you look at month-two, month-two, the data usually rolls in around December or so, you grew by 1,300, 1,300. Now typically in the past, the difference between month-one and month-two data is not been as significant as it was this year or as it was last year. So one of my recommendations would be that the school system rethinks using month-one data and perhaps moves to month-two data as long as it aligns with your planning process. data and perhaps moves to month-two data as long as it aligns with your planning process. So you're pushing everything back a month, and sometimes that, that messes things up. But if that's a consideration that you'd be willing to make, I think we would get a more accurate picture about what's really happening in the county. As I mentioned, that discrepancy was never this large before, but now it's beginning to be that way, and it might be a good, good thing to consider. The last piece that I'll point out here is what we call a cohort survival ratio. This is about as far as in the weeds as I'll go, but this is important. So what a cohort survival ratio is, if I can say it, it's a, it's a measure of how a population grows from one grade to the next over a year. So how do first graders go, grow into the second grade class system-wide or even at a school? The reason this is important, it, we, we use that to understand how these cohorts matriculate to the system, through the system. The amazing thing about Johnson County Public Schools this year was the average CSR across all 13 grades was 1.034. Let me tell you what that number means. If everybody in first grade graduates to second grade and you don't have any leave or any join, your CSR is one. So what that number means is that across the board, about 3%, and there's, there's other factors involved, but roughly speaking, about 3% of your population was coming into the district for this year. That's pretty amazing. In fact, out of the 13 CSRs for 2017, 10 of those 13 were maximized this year. So you're seeing more in migration with, across the board, from kindergartners, which is 15% above normal, above one, all the way to 12th grade. That's, that's a sign of in migration. It's not the only sign of in migration, and there are other factors, but it's a pretty good thumbprint. Any questions on that? I know that's a little technical.
Is that where you got the number of difference between month-one and two? Is it people that are slow getting started, or they just moved in, or what, what is the cause of that?
That's a great question. I can't identify the cause of the discrepancy between month-one and month-two for Johnson County otherwise. I know that in some districts, some parents are late to enroll their children because of whatever their military schedules, for example, have, do not allow them to enroll their kids early when they, when they should, so they're a month late. But I can say that in general terms, if it's a smaller district, we don't see that much change between month-one and month-two. The bigger the district gets, the more we see a change. For Wakes, for Johnstons, for Guilfords, we see a change in between month-one and month-two. So it's not directly connected to this, but it is an in-migration issue. Yes, sir. Anything else on that?
Excuse me?
Yes.
The difference, one and two, what about two and three, three and four? Are those numbers kept? Are they monitored?
You mean the grades?
Month-one.
No, month-one.
Oh, month, month, okay. The reason we, we stick with month-one and month-two is that's what DPI uses for their allocations. And I believe the method they use is called best-of-two, which means the bigger the two. So that's that. Okay, we shift gears to the other side of the membership forecast, which are what I call future potentials. These really involve the findings from the land use study and the data that we get from GIS analysis. So as Matthew pointed out, we have a almost, almost comprehensive list of residential developments throughout the county. Every one of those numbers that you saw on that table can be entered into a GIS database. So we know where the development is, we know how many residential units are going to, eventually going to pop out, and we have some idea of a build-out time. So that's that future glance and put into a GIS database that I'll talk about in just a moment. The GIS analysis allows us to take all this data and basically connect it to maps. So that's what GIS stands for, Geographic Information Systems, and it's a connection in between the data that the land use study gives us and dots on a map. Going a little deeper into that, it's nice because it gives us the power to, to look at the districts on many different resolutions. Some of the statistics that we've talked about up to this point, we're looking at the system as a whole. So how does a county or the district as a whole grow? What is the system-wide membership forecast for the entire county? We can also go down to the school level and examine the same questions there. And we can even go to the parcel level. The parcel level allows us to identify whether parcels are developed, whether they're residential or non-residential. Do they have a child in there that goes to Johnson County Public Schools? So all that information is calculated and used to determine not just how many kids are going to be in the county over the next 10 years, but where are they going to be? Which schools are they going to impact, and when can we expect that to happen? An interesting number, I always try to put this number out whenever I talk in front of decision-makers, is what I call the student generation potential or student generation ratio. In our analysis, we use the number of students per developed parcel. So that for Johnston County is .45, .45 students per developed parcel. That doesn't mean that there aren't some parcels out there with a whole lot of, a whole lot more students, but the median, if you look across the entire county, is Any questions on that? So circling back around, this is, just to pull this together, we looked at some of the historic trends that go into a membership forecast, we looked at the future potentials, the data involved in locating where those growth potentials are going to be, and what we end up with is a forecast. Now, what you're looking at here, I hope you have copies individually. We don't. Okay? I blew these up, and I know the copies are available. Excellent. I feel like Santa Claus now.
We got some copies coming.
Now, each of you should get two printed copies. One of them looks a lot like this with greens and reds, and then there's another one with some shading on it as well. They represent the same numbers, but in a different way. So we'll go through each one of those one at a time when you get them.
I assume there's going to be, we're going to be able to access this powerful presentation?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and all these documents too. Yes. All right, let me fast, okay, that's the ones. Good, 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 good. We call this the out-of-capacity table, and I'll, I'll walk through this and show you what the colors mean and what the numbers are supposed to represent. So each school in the county is, is listed as a row. You can see the capacity, and let me mention something about the capacities used in this calculation, at least in this draft here. These capacities do not include any adjustments for the proposed changes in the K-three teacher-student ratios. So what we're looking at is more of the design capacity. Is that a decent word, Mike? Okay. So that's in the second column there. For elementary level, we include the pre-K counts. The pre-K counts are important because those pre-K children take up seats in schools too, so we need to count them. And then starting with month-one, 2017-18, and going to the right, that's the forecast for each school. The colors represent the utilization of that particular school. Utilization is how crowded they are. If, if it's a green, then you're less than 95%. If it's yellow, you're between 95 and 100%. If it's orange, you're 100 to 105%. And if you're red, you're over 105%. So I'd encourage you to, to take these documents, and if you get the, the Excel versions, you can add and subtract and do your own little calculations. But let me give you some overall numbers here. For the elementary schools that you're looking at on this screen, the five-year growth is estimated to be about 1,500. So from 2017 to 2022, we're looking at about 1,500 additional students. The 10-year growth is expected to be about 2,700. All right, I'll move on to middle schools and high schools. Same story with the, the color coding here, no pre-Ks involved with these schools. Your table should have special or alternative schools on the bottom as well. They're not included on this, but your table will be a little bit more comprehensive. Also, at the top, you'll see some assumptions used for the membership forecast. Let me give you some overall numbers for middle schools. The five-year growth mark is about 740. The 10-year growth mark is about 1,800. That's middle schools. For high schools, the five-year growth mark is 960. The 10-year is expected to be over 1,600.
Are these actually numbers? I mean, like, when I look at Corinth Holder High School, it's at 160% of capacity. Is that odd, even possible?
And I'll, I'll read a little bit into your question. The month-17 ones are actual enrollments or membership, I should say, at the school. So those numbers are fixed by DPI. From there, that's the forecast. So the 17-18 ones are, are actual numbers. So ORED has been using the out-of-capacity table for a long time, and it's very effective, and it's a, it's a striking view of the facilities in, in your district. I've, I've begun to look at different ways of trying to slice this up. And one of the ways I'd like to show you tonight is from a system-wide view, and it's still combining the membership forecast and capacity, but it's doing it in a different way. What you see here is three different colors. The top one is K-five. The bottom red one is 6/8, and in the middle there, the green is grades 9/12. I'm not using elementary, middle, and high because you have schools like Benson that are K-five, and you have Selma that's, okay, there's, but these are K-fives and 6/8s and 9/12s. So if you look at those across the entire county and look out 10 years, the white dotted line there is a current year, that horizontal bar represents the capacity today. So as you see that membership forecast in the blue inching above the horizontal blue bar in about 2023, that's system-wide a representation of not enough seats for your kids, system-wide. And that doesn't mean that some of the schools today aren't overcapacity. This is if you could spread everybody all over the county, which doesn't happen, but if you could, this is when you'd run into some trouble. On high school, as you mentioned, sir, we're looking at, that's the green in the middle. We're already looking at a state of being overcapacity. The membership exceeds the number of available seats. And you just opened a middle school, so at the moment, the red is a little bit below So the big question, I hope, that's percolating in your, in your head is, how big is that gap? What does that gap represent? That's what this is about. That's the future needs of Johnson County Public Schools. In order to answer that, that's what the second table you were handed will do. I call this the utilization table, and what it does is basically the same thing as the out-of-capacity table, but instead of showing you the utilization in a color band, what it shows you is the number of available seats in a color band, okay? The numbers in this chart represent the available seats in a school over the next 10 years. If it's a negative number, you don't have any seats. If it's a positive number, you have seats. So as an example, let's see if I can point this, right there. See that? I'm on the elementary one, so that's the top table in your, in your document. That says minus 1,114, 1,114, and that year is 2022. That's a deficit of seats in 2022 predicted at about 1,000, about 1,100, I should say. As you go out all the way to the 10-year forecast, the 10-year mark here, that number is what, minus 27? So that's a deficit, shortage of available seats by about 2,700.
Question?
Yes, sir.
In your work, Mike, and in Matthew, you talked about transportation issues as it relates to growth. Well, what about transportation as it relates to that chart that showed the summary of all of them? In other words, right now, we've got enough seats. It matches up pretty well.
Yes.
But there's some, as was pointed out, 50% overcapacity right now.
Right.
What are the practicality of redefining lines to, not only for right now, but for this planning portion?
Well, that's, that's part of the discussion that my colleague, Thomas Dudley, will, will take up when I'm finished here.
Okay.
But ORED certainly has been involved with Johnson County Public Schools in the past to, to look at those kinds of questions. And finally, I'll end up with the utilization table for middle and high school. So as we said, middle schools are doing pretty nice. You just opened a middle school, you're looking pretty good until maybe the very end. High schools, as, as been stated a couple times, you're already overcapacity system-wide, and you can see the way these cells, cells are shaded. The redder they are, the fewer available seats you have. So if it's, if it's dark red, like Corinth Holders right here in 2027, that means they don't have very many seats at all. In fact, it's minus a bunch. So my hope is that, that these two documents in, in parallel will give you some ideas not only of the magnitude of, of the problem we're seeing in growth, but also a little bit of a, an idea about where that, those issues may be localized. And finally, I'll just wrap up and say a couple words here. So thus far, this, this presentation and the documents you have in front of you are focused on growth and how growth may impact Johnson County Public Schools. We have tried to summarize what we've learned from the past, what we know currently, and hopefully explain to you how we might use that information to learn something about the future. There should be little doubt that Johnson County and Johnson County Public Schools will continue to experience growth at levels equal to exceeding those seen in the past. But growth is not the only issue that you must consider. That's what we're about. We're about talking about growth. That's not the only thing on your plate. Some of the other considerations, this is by no means a comprehensive list, the age and condition of existing facilities, the use of mobile classrooms in the district, changing policies involving class size which could significantly affect building capacity, and the shifting demographics that come with growth. Often what we see when, when counties experience this kind of growth is, is it all little kids and they're growing up? What I see, at least in one year, is for Johnson County, it's across the board. You're seeing a lot of little kids, but you're seeing people in the secondary schools too coming into the county, so. So I'll leave it at that, and my colleague, Thomas, will take it from there and see where we can go from here.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Mr. Williams.
Uh, Mr. Godwin just said, so based on your utilization forecast, if I'm looking at that, even if we could take the kids and move them around and, you know, where you got some seats and no seats, in two years, and this, again, you're taking out the K-three class-sized legislation, which is already going to impact this-
Yes, ma'am.
-next year, but let's say it didn't and everything stayed the same, in two years, if we mixed them all up and equaled it out today, in two years, we're forty-four seats short in elementary school and in, well, that's actually one year, and in two years, a hundred and fifty short in middle school, and we're already five hundred and fifty short in high school now, even, so you couldn't mix them up.
That's what that table is supposed to represent.
Okay, that's what I'm, just making sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I didn't ask if there are any questions. Just high-tailing it out of here.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So with all of these considerations in mind that Mike has discussed, uh, the logical sort of next step is to ask, you know, what are the potential solutions that we could examine? And also along with that, uh, to try to determine exactly what your specific facility needs are, what specific progress, projects should be your priority. And ORED, part of what we do is to help assist in that way. And the reason we're able to do that is because of our, our ability to employ operations research algorithms and optimization to help create scenarios and maps that we can then take to the school system to analyze, uh, potential, uh, options looking forward. And what we have next here is one totally fictitious example of, uh, a deliverable that we would have ready within the next month or two. This is an example of a new site, new school site optimization. And what you'll see here are the current elementary facilities, I believe, are rectangles and then we have three new, uh, sites for potential schools. Uh, this highlights specifically and models very well, uh, your potential faci, or your current facilities, what your current facility's capacities are, geolocated or geospatially referenced student data, and also some of the information that Mr. Palmer spoke about with, uh, discussing residential development, uh, data and then also, uh, modeling out, uh, how students are going to, uh, come from those developments. So using this model, we're able to determine not only what the specific needs are today, but then also modeling forward what those needs are going to be in the future. Uh, more broadly, instead of just talking about new schools, the same algorithm can be used, uh, to help model where, uh, perhaps it would be relevant for there to be an addition or capacity added to an existing school as well. And this is the type of analysis that we conduct for each level, elementary, middle and high, as we're going through our analysis. And it's a, it's a quantitative way to try to, uh, bring parties together and try to create, uh, some degree of consensus about what, what are the issues and what are the, the potential solutions as well. Uh, with that, this is the last slide that we have. We wanted to give you a quick, uh, bit of insight into where, where we are in the process right now and where we will be going. And, uh, we're open, open to, uh, taking questions that, at this point, any of the three of us are, are available?
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Just to, uh, the data you shared with us previously with the capacity and everything else, do you have any indication how the K-three class size would impact Johnson County Public Schools? Do you have any kind of thought?
I wouldn't have any, yes.
When you're looking at the total of high school students, there's two programs where high school students are actually going to the community college.
Right.
Are those included in this, these numbers?
No.
Because that would be part of what DPI would give you, isn't it?
No, they're-
Because their high school, basically, who's going to pay?
Yeah, as I understand how DPI rolls this out, that, that, the number you see for a particular high school is where they spend the majority of their time, I believe. Uh, I, maybe somebody else can, can pull that out for me if that were your-
Yeah, that, that's not one of the questions I had. With the, um, with this non-traditional learning, um, with the high schools, um, how much are the high schools being utilized? I heard you mentioned seats a lot. How, how much, and I don't know who this question would be for, if it's the superintendent or you guys, um, you know, with the internet-based learning and the off-campus type of learning and the different programs, um, if we're over capacity at, let's say, eight o'clock in the morning, where, where are we at at ten o'clock in the morning and where are we at three o'clock in the afternoon?
Uh, that's a good question. I'm not qualified to answer that. Do you have any?
Sure, I'll be glad to.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we work with, uh, virtual education. In fact, we have expanded what we offer this year more than what we've ever done in the past. So a student at any of our traditional high schools could have face-to-face instruction. They could have a blended model where, uh, part of the day they are face-to-face, but, uh, for maybe a class or possibly two classes, um, they could be online through a virtual-type platform. And then a very, very small percentage of our students, uh, probably would be in the single digits, uh, Mr. Stewart, uh, fewer than ten, might do something completely online and not seat in a seat. So in terms of, uh, sitting in the seats, the majority of our high school students are in the class the majority of the day. Some students come in late, some students leave early, but the majority of them are there for at least two or three, if not four periods. But what you allude to is, uh, very apropos because it is the future of public education. Uh, but we can never underestimate the importance of that face-to-face interaction with the ability in the classroom.
Understood, thank you.
I'm just, yeah, wondering about availability of, uh, land for building schools. I represent rural community because I'm married to a farmer. East of ninety-five is still considered rural and there's a lot of road cropping there. There's some on the western side of ninety-five. Um, and there's a trend toward more young people now wanting to go into farming. That's a new trend. So are we going to have places to build schools? What are we going to do? Are we going to double up on the usage or?
I think it's a very, very legitimate question. I can only, uh, point to examples that I've seen, uh, with Wake where they've had to go back and revisit their, their school models, their design models, because there's just not enough land to, to do what they used to do. And that may be something that's in, in your future in Johnson County Public Schools. There, there are creative solutions out there. Um, I'm not that creative, but there are creative solutions out there for that.
Any more questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a, a nagging comment to my board. When we talk about, I have the utmost respect for our superintendent and the school board. We've got a lot of challenges in front of us and I think we can work together to, to meet those challenges. But anybody who knows me well know I've spent a lot of time, twenty-five years canoe racing. I've spent a lot of time in swift water. And if you get in that boat in swift water without a paddle, you're just going where the current takes you. And it may not be exactly where you want to go. I mean, you're just reacting, you're just going. And I wonder sometimes if that's what we're doing. We're just, you know, we're looking at what's coming at us and we're just floating with the flow. Maybe it's time we got a paddle and started paddling a particular direction and determining where we go in that flow. You know, if, if we say we're going to have X number of people moving here, most people regard that as a good thing. I've seen commissions from other counties who have outmigration, no commercial development and, and they wish they had our problem. But at some point, I wonder if we need to steer in specific directions and control that growth or at least have a handle on it to get to the desired result and not just scramble trying to, to solve and, and react to what's happening. Does that make sense? Land use planning, um, you know, some things legislative won't let us do, but maybe we need to work on that and get it, get those things that will help us do that.
And I, I, I can, uh, I can somewhat agree with, uh, Commissioner Godwin's comments, but, um, and there needs to be a plan, in, in my opinion, but I also am a, a marketplace guy and I feel like the marketplace is going to do a lot of that dictating. I think when government steps in and starts flooding things in place to control the economy, control growth and control markets, sometimes it could have adverse effects. Um, not to say I totally disagree with you, but it's, it's, um, I think the market normally corrects itself. It had a big correction in oh-eight. It kind of slowed growth just because, um, a lot of these subdivisions, their own plant don't necessarily mean they're going to be built out. I mean, that has to be taken into consideration with what the market does, but I, I don't disagree.
I got a question for Dr. Remfro. Um, Dr. Remfro, a while ago, you, uh, you mentioned the virtual schools that, that the high schools are doing. You know, you had some emails back and forth with Rick, because I think Larry Wood, a couple of them, had some questions about what we'd heard of capacity or the attendance was in high schools. And one of your emails you sent back, you said something like free schools or something, but, and you want to do more, but it depended on funding. And my question is, is that state funding or local funding or what kind of funding? How much are you talking about funding?
Uh, capacity in terms of what buildings, Mr. Williams.
There were some emails that went back and forth. You remember we, uh, Larry picked us a specific question about, uh, the high schools, what, what, he had, he had heard that the attendance was down, it wasn't, it pulled pasty all the time, and you just said it a while ago, they're, they aren't in the school all the time.
Yes, sir.
And, and you said you, you were doing some virtual stuff, like you said, and you said you'd like to do more in this email, but it depended on funding. And my question is, you didn't specify whether that was state funding. Do they pay for the virtuals, the programming and stuff, or, or is it local funding or?
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Williams. I appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
Um, you know, we're just dipping our toe in the water as it pertains to, to virtual, uh, learning. Uh, the jury is still out on how effective it is because, you know, myself, being an old country boy, uh, I needed the face-to-face and I need a lot of extra help after school. But, you know, some of our, our students are very bright and they don't need that face-to-face interaction. So what we're attempting to do is remove those barriers so that those students can accelerate and graduate early. Uh, you know, we had a couple of, uh, mid-year graduations, uh, last week down at South Johnston and Clayton. I think we have one tomorrow night at Smithville-Selma. So that is something that we're just embracing. Uh, in terms of the funding piece, uh, yes, sir, we do look to the state for some of those fundings, but if we truly want to serve the students here, it could be a collaboration of state funding as well as local dollars. But, uh, that particular comment was geared towards getting our state to do more and not necessarily, uh, directed at our county commissioners.
Okay. And this virtual school, that, that programming or software or whatever that's provided by the state?
At a cost. We, it, it's at a cost. You know, they charge for, uh, every credit hour or every course that a student takes. You know, we have to pay for that.
And I guess the question could be asked, do we spend, if we need county dollars, on more seats or do we utilize that money to spend on the new internet learning, so to speak, technology, so, so to speak? Where, where, where are funds best, best spent?
Yes, sir. Good question.
And I agree, I agree with you. I, I kind of like the face-to-face.
Amen. Uh, I think for the majority of students, uh, in our elementary, middle and high schools, you know, face-to-face is better suited, but the blended learning approach is something that is fast approaching, not just in Johnson County, but nationally and worldwide. And, uh, we'll have to continue to gauge and make sure that balance of new construction spending is equaled out by, by the virtual piece.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you're ever going to take away the face-to-face, um, education contact between, uh, teachers and students. You know, the challenges that we have right now is, you know, we're growing, we're blessed to live in a county that's growing because it could be the opposite. We could be deciding on what schools we're going to close versus where, where we need to have targets for schools. So the proximity of Johnson County in North Carolina, we're, we're positioned for prosperity and, uh, we're blessed to live in a county that's growing. You know, uh, Ms. Grant mentioned that in two years, we're going to be at full capacity. Um, I can't remember what grade level it was.
Elementary.
Elementary. Well, we hadn't even decided on a school yet and it's going to take two years to build a school. So, and then we got the bond referendum coming up in November. You know, I look at these things as opportunities. Uh, we can all look at it as a challenge, but it's an opportunity. And, uh, everybody wants to come to Johnson County because of the, the public education that you can get in this county. And the education that you can get in this county prepares our students for the workforce that we have in this county, the biotechs and the industries we have in this county that, that hire a thousand employees plus. Uh, that's why they're coming to Johnson County. So I have no doubt that the Board of Education and the County Commissioner will lock arms and tackle this opportunity. We have, the twelve years I've been on this board, both boards have been transparent and the decisions that we both make are for the prosperity of our students, which is going to be for the prosperity of our county in the future when those, when those students graduate. So, um, it's a great challenge to be tackling right now. But if anybody, all our stakeholders in here, if you've never been into one of our public schools, you need to walk into the schools and you understand why people are transferring to Johnson County. You can eat off any floor in our public schools. Even Smithville-Selma and South Johnson, it was built in nineteen sixty-four, nineteen sixty-nine. Uh, that's when my dad came to this county to be an educator. You can eat off the floors in the school. The facilities are well-maintained. Uh, we just, the county commissioners gave us approved thirty million dollars to, to do improvements to our existing schools. We got seventy million dollars in additional, um, improvements that need to go on with the schools that we currently have on the ground. And it, and I, I'm confident those, uh, repairs will be done. But also we got to tackle the challenge of our growing population and student count. We have four thousand students in mobiles, a hundred and eighty-three mobiles on our school campuses. That's not saying that education's not being done, but, uh, they need to be in a good learning environment. But, uh, I look forward to the challenge and, uh, and I appreciate Mr. Miller, Mr. Dudley and Mr. Palmer for sharing the information so we can make, uh, quality decisions.
And I, I agree with Mike on, on that. Um, you know, the last thirty years, we've always built schools and I see us always building schools. And I'd like to, I'd like to thank the taxpayer for that because they've always been very supportive of, of school bonds that, that we put out there. So that, they, they are definitely, uh, definitely to be thanked for that.
Well, Mrs. Stewart, the success of our stu, schools is because they're our community schools. We're known for having the community schools and each community that lives around our schools support our schools. They get involved with our schools and that's why everybody wants to be a part of Johnson County Public Education.
Our county manager and our finance manager, Chad McClam, have been working hard to try to determine, uh, there's a lot of moving parts of this puzzle as it relates to debt, service, capacity, uh, things we're still paying for. But when you guys can get with us and, uh, determine the needs and how it, how we can fold it in, you know, when we do a bond issue, all that money's not paid out at one time and we need to explore in detail the number of cycles that goes through in, in meeting the facility needs as well as what we can, can repay. There's some unknowns facing us as it relates to, um, revaluation in our tax base. That's probably going to increase considerably next year. After this budget year, we'll be dealing with a new tax base in the next budget cycle. Um, so there's a lot to do. Looking forward to doing it, but there's a lot to do. I would leave you with one thought about these charts. I went back to some of the old charts, three years old or more, and looked at a certain year, like twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and then looked at the current projections and they're always higher, meaning as we get closer, it's, it's higher than what we thought it was going to be. So I dare say going forward, these numbers ten years out are going to be higher than what we think now.
Do we ever look at, um, multi-track systems for, like Wake County has that in order-
Do we ever look at multi-track systems for, like Wake County has that, in order to increase capacity? I mean, basically, it's almost like thinking of, I'm going to put on a second shift, because you have a, in a four-track system, you have three in there each time, and so you wind up going the same days. So you increase the capacity of the school by doing that. Have we ever explored any of that?
I have a response to that. About, I don't know how many years ago, I was still a practicing educator at the time, we did an extensive study involving community, elected officials, parents. We even had students on the committee, and we did national research. And year-round schools are closing. Wake County is probably one of the few exceptions that have maintained continuing year-round schools. There are so many disadvantages. One is the outuse of the facility. The facility wears out because you never have time for maintenance. That was a huge consideration. Lots of other considerations, but we did study that in depth. And if you look nationally, the trend for year-round schools has decreased because it isn't effective. Doesn't improve achievement, doesn't keep your facilities in the manner that you would like to keep them. So there are a lot of reasons, but it has been studied extensively. I wanted to be a principal of a year-round school. Beg Dr. Cosby, please let me do a year-round school, multi-track. After I did the research, I said, I don't want it. I'll have 30 mobile units, which I did when I retired, rather than have a year-round school.
Dr. Remfro?
Mr. Jackson, I think it was, I was sitting in the principalship at the time that the study was done at North Johnston High School. And to be accurate, if you were to embrace a multi-track system, I think the trend is that you could increase enrollment at approximately 33% at a particular site. And what Dr. Smith did allude to, you may save money upfront in new school construction, but down the road, it is not cost advantageous because of the wear and tear on the building. The buildings wear out quicker. Utilities bills are a concern, as well as transportation, and we can't forget the folks at transportation. And I just read an article, I think it was last week in the Raleigh newspaper, about Wake County moving away. I think they're transitioning down from 17 multi-tracks to eight multi-tracks because it is not yielding them what they need.
One other thing, and I'll be quiet. Have y'all heard anything else, anything about maybe a statewide bond referendum? And if so, can, can y'all speak to that a little bit? It's been a long time since they actually did one.
Yes, sir. There, there's much discussion in the General Assembly. Part of my responsibility, I had traveled to Raleigh last week, and there is great traction in one of the houses in the General Assembly that they're very supportive. Not sure if the other house is as supportive, but had shared some preliminary numbers with the, the commission. I think it was last spring when we were going through the local budget process, but if the state were to float that, I think it's $1.9 billion bond statewide, that we could garner another, I think it was 40 or 50 million dollars in, in capital needs, sir. But encourage your elected officials in Raleigh to be supportive of that, please.
Oh, we will.
And that's not just the commissioners and the Board of Education members to encourage them either. That's all stakeholders. Please encourage.
Yes, sir. I did want to mention too, and Dr. Remfro and I and Dr. Johnson with the College have been communicating, just so everybody knows, that the Board of Commissioners, the first action for a bond referendum would be at the May County Commissioners Board meeting. So we've got some time, but the clock is ticking, so. But we have been communicating, and we'll certainly do our part on our end.
Thank you.
Any further questions? For all the visitors, I appreciate you coming tonight. The Commissioners and the Board of Education members, as well as our presenters, will be around after the meeting adjourns to answer any questions. And have a safe trip home. Mr. Goblin?
I'd like to thank the Board members for making time to be here at this special meeting. I would remind you of our normal monthly meeting next Monday at 10 o'clock, and as well as our 6 o'clock evening meeting. Anybody have any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn this special meeting?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post? We're adjourned.